Good evening. It is quite a full house, so that's great. Great to see everybody and we need to do some things to celebrate. And first off is Board Bravo and any updates that you know you want to share.
...easily passing, share this sidewalk with other pedestrians and stay alert. I'm Isaac from Mrs. Zimc's youth class and our supporting question was, "How can we safely cross the street to avoid getting hurt by moving vehicles?"
Hi, I'm Sydney again and our ideas were always use the crosswalk. If there's buttons, use, push it and wait. Make eye contact with drivers and wait for their signal to cross and cross in a group if possible.
Next up, we will be showing you a video of Officer Zach explaining and tips on how and demonstrating how to be safe when crossing the street.
When you get to the crosswalk, it's best to cross with her instead of a bunch of single people, right? So wait for your friends if you can. Once you're ready to cross, you get to the crosswalk, don't wait too long, you confuse the drivers. Check your intersection, know it's clear, and then step out and go. Also, as you're walking through the crosswalk, make sure you're looking the whole time. Don't be looking down at yourself though, don't be just looking at your friend. You need to be watching those drivers, so if someone doesn't see you, you can stop or be out of the way. Go ahead, boy. When you get to the crosswalk, you don't want to cause confusion for drivers. So if you're not ready to cross, make sure you say "not to cross the crosswalk" while you're looking at your friend. When you're ready to cross, step off to the crosswalk. Right? When you get there, make sure you step out of your direction, make sure your car sees you. Unless you know they won't stop, that may be crossed. Go ahead, girl.
This day, students gone in groups to present our project to all Moyer Mustangs. As you can see, in this video, they're playing the game called Red Light, Yellow, Red, Green Light. In this video, they're watching the video we just watched. And in this video, they have a coloring sheet with a flag on it. They put their name in the blanks place and it says, "I promise to be a safe Mustang when I walk and bike around town."
We worked out, we talked to others about why is walking, scooter and bike safety important for everyone?
Over sixty-seven thousand people get an accident every year.
October is the most common month for bike and walk accidents. Make sure to be extra on Halloween.
If you're riding your bike, you should wear a helmet properly. You should have, have it tightly strapped to your chin like this. And you should have two fingers above your eyebrows. You should also have bright clothes or a flashlight like this.
Make sure to have both hands on your vehicle handle that all the time and make sure to lock your wheels.
Be extra careful around driveways. Officer Zach said that driveways are one of the most leading locations for accidents. Sidewalks are here for a reason. Use them, look at the place multiple times, make sure you always make eye contact with the driver.
Didn't you know fifty-six percent of bike accidents happen at night? Don't wear dark clothes, wear bright clothes like this.
We taught all of our Moyer classrooms. Now, we hope to influence all of Fort Thomas, including the other schools.
We started this because it was a reoccurring problem. Although accidents happen, we hope to prevent future bike and walker accidents.
Let's make this something we think about daily. Does anybody have any questions?
You know, I think we all love having neighborhood schools in a small community and kids that walk and ride to school, but there are challenges that come with that. Um, and I really like when we heard about this from Mr. Robinson, was telling the board about what you guys were doing, that I thought it was great. Like Mr. Winkler said, that you took something that, you know, was a scary kind of thing and you, instead of, you know, just accepting it, said, "What can we do to change it?" And then came up with these ideas and, and were real leaders. So that's, it's great to hear. And then you're talking about how you can also work with other elementary schools in the district to spread the message. Cause um, while they may not be in the center of town and get quite as much traffic still, well, we have had accidents there, so that's, that's great.
So you're gonna go, you're gonna help the other schools out? You're gonna, you're gonna go to city and take the show on the road? Maybe go to city too, you could help them out?
Well, I've, I've actually got one suggestion, cause I know a lot of your parents, maybe we, we now need to make sure they're not driving like maniacs as well, right? You gotta go home and tell them to be careful too, yeah.
That's an expert in tech.
That's an expert in tech, yeah.
But more than that, you all are just fantastic at your presentation. You're very persuasive as well, researched, um, good suggestions, and so thank you so much.
Were you nervous? You didn't look nervous.
Not at all.
And you taught all the younger, all the younger kids, right? That all admire, yeah. Do you think they, uh, learned some things?
Yeah, were they good students?
I, I had the, uh, the great pleasure, I think Cameron was, was doing a presentation, uh, and, and watched. He and his colleague, uh, lead an entire second grade class. And it, and it was about, um, it was probably about a thirty-minute presentation. The, the students were all in a circle and then, and then they practiced it and quizzed it. And you, you may have heard him talk about red light, yellow light, green light, but it was, uh, that these guys were in charge. And as, as you all say, um, be a leader every day. I would love it if, 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 uh, maybe your teachers can join you, you guys can turn around, your parents can take a picture and then turn back around after that to, uh...
And it was really great that, um, Officer Zach, the SRO, was involved with that too.
Well, that's another reason, we kind of are personal pride in there. Because my ideas is taking this all into charge of the city council and that's great.
All right, um, we did not have any interested speakers for community forums, so we will move right into our action items for the evening. And, uh, our dedicated crowd is with us, thank you for saying. All right.
I do have one item and I meant to do this in the, um, I'm sorry for the, uh, procedure here, but I want to introduce Rick Wolf. Uh, Rick was kind of blitted in back there. Rick is, is the superintendent Dayton Independent Schools. And I'm working with, with Rick this year as, um, is a first-year superintendent and he's helping me. So thanks for being here tonight, Rick.
Thank you.
Yep, all good. And thank you for serving, uh, as a superintendent, so it's very important. All right, so what do you have first tonight, Mr. Wisman?
Actually, I think I have only, only one item of Athletic Complex at Tower Park. You know, quick update and then opportunity for you to ask questions before we include some payouts. Things been going very well. Unfortunately, the way our progress meetings with Morrell are scheduled is they're always the day after the board meeting, or normally the day after the board meeting, cause our Tuesday mornings are afternoon. So, uh, we'll get some additional information, uh, tomorrow on schedule and things like that. But so far, um, Matt Morrell is very pleased with progress, uh, where they're at. The soil testing we've talked about, we've had, uh, zero movement. There was that one sixteenth of an inch, but after we got some rain, it magically reappeared. Cause most of that was attributed to the dry conditions. Uh, work continues on, uh, if you've visited the project, on all of the retaining walls around the property. And they're starting to move guard rail, facilitate, uh, leveling out for the future soccer field, track area. And then they'll be starting to grade up and get to the final grade, parking lot. Since the last meeting, uh, Riegler did finish, uh, Blacktop and the sidewalks and, uh, pretty much most of Phase One, uh, enough that, um, on the day that we were vis, on the Friday that we were visited by Hurricane Colleen, they still went ahead in the rain, moved the fencing to create the pedestrian walkway that we had been, for lack of a better term, advertising. Cause it was a, a big goal of ours as well as Morrell's, uh, had regular to have that available before merchants and these. They did, they had worked the way.
It's looking awesome.
It, it, things are going, uh, well. Uh, we are, um, you know, there's, the guardrail is the one large outstanding piece of, uh, work from Phase One. There's some stuff that technically is Phase One, that we're actually gonna move to Phase Two. And the principal reason for that is Riegler can't really do that work until a lot of Phase Two work happens. And if we go ahead and move that, uh, then we can work on closing out Phase One, which will allow us to, uh, pay out not just Riegler, but particularly all of their subs that will have been done for us. We don't want to hold payments back on them for another year. So we're just gonna kind of move that work to Phase Two. And then, uh, we'll reduce the Phase One contracts and we can start on closing that piece of puzzle. We are meeting with the city tomorrow to talk about some issues, um, you know, up in that area. Cause we didn't have a formal landscaping plan and, and stuff like that. So, uh, there's two items that, um, you know, are mutual interests, that, that we want to have a discussion about, we're gonna do that after the progress meeting tomorrow. That could, um, impact some changes, but, you know, also may not. Any other questions?
So that walkway is now, I guess, permanently open for the most part?
Yeah.
Till, till something else needs to happen?
Something, yeah. Every once in a while, something may happen where some works happening where they may, may have to restrict that. But it's Matt's intention to maintain that, um, as much as possible, if not a hundred percent. Cause we want the ability for that neighborhood to be able to access, um, up into the park in those areas.
They've probably seen it, but have we, did we communicate that to them?
Uh, I do believe that information was communicated out. I know that we were working on some pictures and posts for our website, uh, some things like that. And, um, I know that, um, it was he, it's been heavily used. So...
What's the schedule looking like again on, as far as the soil had to settle and, and test that?
That, the first one of those five-week periods concluded last Thursday.
Okay.
So, uh, they read that. I have not seen the report come through yet, but we're hoping to see that today. If that's the case, uh, if there is no movement, then they can go ahead and start working on the building foundation area. The other large areas over by one of the retaining walls, um, you know, and impact and kind of the back end of the, the track and soccer field. And they were close to starting on that period. We thought there might be a period where you wouldn't see any work happening down there because of overlap on these tests. But the way it's worked out, um, they're, they're gonna be starting on the park that they were waiting on while they wait on tests for another area. So there won't be any apparent areas where things are just sitting. So there's gonna be more, you know, the appearance of work going constantly down there. Any other questions? If not, we have first, uh, pay application number five to Riegler for three hundred seventy-eight thousand, fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Yes, we do. So we have some action to take around this. Uh, in a moment, I'll ask for a motion around, uh, pay application five to Riegler, Blacktop Incorporated in the amount, as Jerry mentioned, of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park project. Can I get a motion of approval for that?
I'll make a motion.
All right, all those in favor, or second?
I'll second.
Okay, second now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are approved.
And then next will be a pay application to Morrell. It's number three and it's a large one, but we have these on our large projects. When it gets to seven figures, uh, so it's one million, sixteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents.
All right, so I need a motion to approve that pay application as the number three to Morrell in the amount that, um, Mr. Wisman just mentioned, one million, um, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park. Can I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all, I'm free.
Pretty snappy. Next, Mr. Johnson?
Excuse me, everyone, I believe the first motion or the first item that we're gonna discuss is the GoToPhone contract. So we are running into the last few months of our current phone contract for the district. Um, we have been using GoToCommunications for our district phone solution for the past three years. And, um, after reviewing their terms and them agreeing to not raise any of the particular rates, we have decided that we would like propose that we would continue with GoTo for another three-year contract. So I do believe you have contracts in front of you. Um, the first page again, just identify and GoToCommunications. Just to let you know, the pricing for this does come from a cooperative contract. Um, so we got very aggressive pricing for that. This is for another three-year contract. Uh, the start date of this would begin December first, twenty twenty-four. And then we go through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. On the second page of the contract, one of the things you might see is, um, the different quantities and totals. The fifty quantities that you see there, um, is the GoToStandard connection, just to give a little bit more information about that. Those are the, um, devices that we have on our desks that, uh, are more high-usage devices. So these are, these fifty licenses go to, um, front office secretaries, all the administrative at the district level and the school level. Um, counselors also, um, across the district also have part of these fifty. So once again, these are the high-usage lines. These, uh, particular licenses, they allow for more minutes per month. Um, and they also allow for some other features, uh, such as web connect meetings and things like that. None of those features we use, but some of them we do, such as the virtual faxing. We use virtual faxing for a lot of our schools and those are included in those as well. So those are our GoToStandard. Um, the Jive price column is the price that we pay as part of that cooperative contract that we're involved with. The second item, the, um, the five, those are conference devices. Those are our conference room for each school. They have a specialized conference phone for that, so it's the quantity of five there. The two hundred and sixty-one, those are the remaining desk phones that we have throughout the district. When I say desk phones, those could be in the classroom, they could be in a workroom, they could be, um, just basically any other phone that you'd find in the district. And then the last number, the four hundred and eleven, um, these are actually related specifically to phone numbers. These are the phone numbers that we own. So these are phone numbers that are attached to those other, um, three hundred plus that you see above there. In addition to any extension that we have, internal extensions that, um, we might use for our special messaging, for our all-call system, uh, we do have a bank of, of numbers reserved for every different school in case we have expansions. So if we have, uh, if we buy, build a, a five-room expansion onto a school or something, we already have a bank of numbers that we can use that go along with our current set of numbers. Um, so even though we are paying for some numbers that we don't have, they're twenty thousand cents a piece per month. So we'd like to go ahead and keep those. And we have had use on just in the previous three years, um, as we've added a few different facilities and we place a phone into our park. These would be where some of those would come into as well. I believe that's all for the quantities there. The last page of the contract, I just want to bring to your attention because we have, this is an addendum to the contract and using, uh, information provided by our board attorney, we have made sure that they have removed anything related to indemnification since as a Kentucky institution, we cannot agree to indemnification. And there's also a, um, option there for termination for convenience in case, um, we go into a, a new fiscal year without, um, appropriating the funds for this particular contract. So those are addendum items that they made specifically at my request. Any other questions about the phone contract?
No, just, uh, I mean, I just have a comment, like, thank you. I know you guys went in and tightened up those numbers as well, um, since this was a new contract we had entered into three years previously and, um, made sure that they were true to everything. And then that allowed for a little bit of savings in terms of lowering those. So, um, that's appreciated, appreciated, cause I know it's, can be tedious, so thank you.
We have the advantage of being able to have this, the first time, the, this contract that's, that's expiring now, we have the option this time of looking back at three years worth of data to figure out the best way to utilize those minutes, how to reappropriate those numbers, what numbers we could shed, what, um, phones we could shed. So yes, there's actually a little bit of savings into this contract, um, which will actually reduce our monthly fee just being by, because we were able to go through and look at those three years worth of data. And, um, and as we've had conversations before, also just the trend of how a district phone solution is used less and less because of virtual meetings and because of cell phones, we see reduction in minutes overall across the district for this particular service, which helps us realize some of those savings as well.
Yeah, not often you see savings on bringing something, so good, good job there on, uh, keeping us efficient.
Are we, no other questions? All right. And also obviously important to have those for safety in terms of those external numbers, the ability for the call-in, the call-out, in terms of safety and making sure that there are enough of those lines in place, so kudos.
We are in compliance with, uh, the E-911 federal regulations. So anytime a, a 911 call is made by any phone, um, there is a, a location marked, not just the street address, but the actual room that's coming from.
Right, so...
And then there are a couple of us within the district that also get alerts, so that we can start our own investigation with those.
So, thank you on a number of fronts there. So, um, action to be taken is, um, is recommended we approve the contract for phone services with GoTo Technologies for three years, beginning December one, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and now let's hear about CETS.
All right, the second item I have is, we have received our first offer of assistance from the School Facilities Construction Commission. This is an annual offer of assistance that's provided, um, to schools across the state that, um, allows for the board to match a dollar amount, uh, up to the offer that they provide. And these are earmarked specifically for educational technology fund usage. The other nice thing about these is they can roll over from year to year. So the way we traditionally use these funds is we use these for larger projects, we use these for unexpected breakdowns and things like that. So the, the amount that we receive from CETS offers of assistance every year, are, are dollars that we would normally ask within our budget anyway for the, for, out of the general budget, for technology budget reasons. So it's nice to have these offers because with just the matching dollar, we are able to capitalize on, um, a lot of the, and for a lot of money that the, the state is providing us for those funds we would be spending anyway. So the first offer is for twelve dollars per student per ADA. They're basing it off of our twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four SEEK numbers. So that is our first offer. In the, uh, spring, we will receive a second offer for nine dollars per ADA. So it's a total of twenty-one dollars per student, uh, per ADA that we will receive over the course of this year. And again, if, if provided the board decides to match those dollars, um, we'll be able to capture all those this year.
And so your point is getting to the twenty-one, just going, going ahead and looking at both of those offers together?
The proposal I'd like, um, you all to consider is to go ahead and, since we know that the overall offer is gonna be twenty-one dollars per ADA for the, for the year, um, to go ahead and, and accept the twenty-one dollars. And just so you know, the twenty-one dollars per ADA is the same amount that was approved the last year and the previous year. The dollar amount always change from year to year. Uh, this particular year's dollar amount just happens to be the same as the past two years.
Okay. All right, well, um, match those funds. All probably makes sense. So let's officially, uh, recommend, the recommended motion is approval to accept and match the entire CETS offer of assistance amount at the present time of this offer and any subsequent offers up to a total of twenty-one dollars ADA for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, with the CETS first offer of assistance being thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, that moves us into discussion items. And, um, we are going to be starting with some dialogue regarding, uh, proposal to change the Kentucky Constitution Amendment Two. I think, um, maybe Mr. Robinson, you're gonna, uh, kind of give us a little bit of context and then we'll hear from each board member individually.
Yeah, I, I'll speak very briefly. This is, uh, a, a topic that, that, that the board has asked that we place into the discussion, uh, agenda here. Mostly because it's a great consequence to, to public education. And so as, as members of the Board of Education, individually, uh, you have opportunities to, to speak on, on behalf of, of issues that are facing our school district, our state, um, and, and to speak as individuals. I would, um, I would recommend that, that you do so as individuals. Um, as a, as a Board of Education, there is some, uh, language out there as to, um, speaking on behalf as a single board as opposed to individuals, but, but I think it is a, a good opportunity and I think it's appropriate that our Board of Education speak about Amendment Two in general. So, uh, you may want to start with actual the language that will be voted on on November fifth. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about, um, I guess, the specifics of it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start by reading how the amendment will be placed on the ballot and then allow, um, each board member to speak individually, as Mr. Robinson said, speaking for themselves. Not as a whole board, but as individuals. And then, um, I'll share my thoughts at the end, but I'll, um, pass it off to you guys first. But just to make sure we all know how this will appear on the ballot come November fifth. It, the wording will be, "To give parents choice and educational opportunities for their children, are you in favor of enabling the General Assembly to provide financial support for the education costs of students in kindergarten through twelfth grade who are outside the system of common public schools by amending the Constitution of Kentucky as stated below? The General Assembly may provide financial support for the education of students outside the system of common schools. The General Assembly may exercise this authority by law, Sections fifty-nine, sixty, one seventy-one, one eighty-three, one eighty-four, one eighty-six, and one eighty-nine of the Constitution notwithstanding." I was gonna say, um, yes, so that is, um, how that will be presented. So ask if, um, individuals would like to share their thoughts.
I mean, I, I'll go first. As I look at this, I, I think first through the lens of a school board member in Fort Thomas, I look at it first and say, well, what are the potential harm it does to our district and what's the potential benefits? And, and I really can't find any of the benefits that it serves for Fort Thomas. I mean, at best, it's maybe nothing happens. And then there's potential things that could happen that would not be beneficial for us. So, as the duty, and then if you take, you know, that hat off and say, well, how do we make our state education system, how do we improve it? I don't see that this method as the way of doing that. I think that, you know, you're, there's struggling districts and there's other ways of trying to get them to improve rather than let's open the doors and kind of make this the Wild West. I don't, I think it's unknown what the result would be. You know, you're voting to just say, we're gonna, I'll kind of write a blank check a little bit, I think, to our state government, just say, who knows how they're gonna do it? So what's the oversight and what's the accountability? How will it be, how will things be regulated? I think there's just a ton of questions to it that kind of leave me feeling in the dark. So, you know, I don't see where voting for it would make much sense for us.
All right, so I'm happy to have the opportunity to express my individual viewpoint on Amendment Two and to explain why I'm gonna be voting no on Election Day. Because currently Kentucky's Constitution is very clear. Public dollars go towards public education in much the same way as other vital services are funded by public funds. The education of our children and the accountability of where our tax dollars go was so important to the framers of the Kentucky Constitution that there are seven separate provisions that work together to preserve and protect public dollars for public schools. And so I just want you all to know what you're gonna be asked to do on Election Day. And that is to be asked whether or not to amend the Constitution and basically hand the state legislature broad new authority to redirect tax dollars to places other than the public school system. A no vote preserves the Constitution. And for Fort Thomas taxpayers specifically, a no vote will preserve a public school system that this community over generations has thoughtfully and carefully worked to build into a world-class experience for students. And on the other hand, a yes vote will give the state legislature a lot of new power and discretion to change school funding in Kentucky. And though we don't know exactly what they're gonna do with that power, they've given us a pretty clear preview of coming attractions with the past several years of legislation. And it's pretty clear that the intent is to redirect public funds to go towards private schools. And since this funding does not currently exist in the school budget, the money has to come from somewhere. And so as I see it, that's either gonna be increased taxes or from the current public school funding. And so that's why I do not support amending the Constitution to hand that discretion over to the legislature. I think it brings partisan politics into an arena that has traditionally been nonpartisan. We're all nonpartisan elected members of this school board. And I want to be very clear in saying that I think partisan politics has no place in the education of our children. One other thing I want to address specifically is I'd like the educators and staff to know that if they feel called to advocate both for the public schools and their professions as public servants, that they may, you may engage on this topic as private citizens, not in your official capacity as during the school day or using the school property, but you still retain your First Amendment right to the freedom of speech. And I think, I believe, I am speaking in my individual capacity, but I believe that I can speak for the, that we have your back here. And so if you have any specific questions on that topic, please feel free to reach out to us individually and we're happy to walk through that particular element as well because I know that that's a little bit challenging also.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, it's not a partisan issue. I think if you're looking at this through the lens of Fort Thomas and you're looking for a potential benefit out there, you can't find them. And I, you know, I only see potential harm. And though that it's, you know, there hasn't been anything written, it's the way the amendment is written, is it allows them to open up the door. What you can see on the other side of that, there's nothing good in it for us. You know, they could potentially leave us alone, but they also could have written the amendment where it would have protected us or it would have done something else. And they chose to be very nonspecific about it. And so, it allows a lot of speculation. I think that's fair. They could have done it, they could have protected high-performing schools. They could have done some other things to do it and they chose not to. So, I think the criticism is very applicable here. And then, everybody knows, I've been at this a long time, there is not another pool of state funding out there for education. There's just not. And so if they're creating a whole nother system, then money has got to come from somewhere. And so, you know, unless they're gonna raise taxes, which is very unlikely, then school systems either here or elsewhere are going to suffer. And, you know, if they're gonna send tax dollars to private schools, there is no system of accountability out there. I'm not aware of a board meeting at any of our private schools that operate in this town or nearby that have a board meeting where you can come and listen and state your objections to the way they're using your tax dollars. It doesn't exist. The, you know, the last thing is, is, you know, the system we created here in our school system, it's all tied very, I think, tightly to a way, to the city itself and the property values you have here. And if they create a system that would allow people to, you know, cross borders or go wherever they want and they, they basically eliminate the districts as they are now, then I think it can affect our property values down the road. So, you know, I'm voting, I'm a big no on this. You know, the other part that I just wanted to mention as well, I mean, there's a lot of, you'll hear a lot of information out there and so I saw a flyer that came out. And this is actually printed, at least it says it's printed by the Diocese of Covington. And so, there were several things on here that, you know, you know, it could give parents more choice. But there are a few things that I think people should know that are not true, but on this. It says it will increase teacher pay. Well, there is nothing in that amendment that increases teacher pay, nothing. And there is no, there's no guarantee, I don't know even how teacher pay would go up. I mean, you're talking about more teachers, less funding, it doesn't work that way. It says it protects public school funding, that is also incorrect. More innovation in education policies, I'm not sure how that plays into it. And then, my favorite one was at the end, which was enable Governor Beshear and lawmakers to create innovative education policies. So, I'm pretty sure there's a, there is a commandment that says, don't do this stuff. Don't talk, don't, you know, don't lie. And, you know, I'm gonna call them out here because that is highly inappropriate. There's nothing in this amendment that improves education. And say, you know, one last thing. I'm still unclear how in the underperforming districts, removing students from those districts and the funding formula is all based on having students. And if you take ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent of those kids out of the school, how that helps that school? There's gonna be kids left behind, so you are, if you, if somebody does that, if parents remove their kids or however it happens, and those kids are no longer there, that school will get less funding. It's gonna be spread out across grades, so it won't match a classroom that they could, you know, have a teacher remove. And so, you're gonna have bigger classes and even worse conditions than perhaps what's already happening in underperforming school. I just, I'm highly disappointed the way it was written. I think they could have been very specific in it. I think, you know, there are ways to do this that could pilot a better opportunity. Scholarship tax credits could, could work. There were a lot of ways that they could do it. I remember when the discussion was taking place around this, there was no discussion allowed. And so I think that the speculation and the criticism of this bill is highly warranted.
I'm a former government teacher, so geeking out on some, some basic principles that I taught my students at Highlands High School, which was, you know, checks and balances and the separation of power. So, to me, I have a lot of concern in terms of potential government overreach and unchecked power in the legislative branch that comes from this. The court system, all the way to the State Supreme Court, has, you know, voted down legislation, as Sarah mentioned, what we would assume or could be possible, directions this would go, but we don't know for sure. You know, the court system has voted those down and this is essentially, would seem to be a way to kind of circumvent having that check on the legislative branch. So, that's something that definitely concerns me. You know, also the fact that we're talking about changing seven parts of the state constitution for, for this. And I don't know what, you know, kind of, that there seems to be, the need doesn't equal the fact that we would be changing that many pieces of our constitution. And then, two, that if we pass this, there's no affirmative or negative. We don't even know what we're essentially putting in place. It's not typically when we talk about amendments to the Constitution, we're talking about something being voted yes, no, up, down. And this is merely giving a blank check, I think, as Clem said, to the legislative branch. We don't even know what the outcome would be. So, if we're going to change our state constitution, it certainly needs to be done for reasons that we know or the outcomes that we're aware of. So, I mean, those are kind of some of the basic principles. I know we, we taught our students at Highlands High School, and I'm sure most civics and government teachers do, separation of power, checks and balances, you know, limitation of power, the way our system has been built. And then we get into some of the other points that have been made, you know, public tax dollars, which, you know, we utilize public tax dollars for things that are of common good, roads, fire department, police department, common schools. All those things benefit the community because we have educated citizens, you know, we have safety, we help students and young people prepare to be productive members of society. Those are all tax, public tax dollars that then are, you know, held to accountability and transparency in terms of the taxpayers being able to know what happens and attending meetings like this. So, you know, when we look at that, we've heard the pie is only so big. Unless we raise taxes, there's no more pie. So then the pieces just get smaller that are given to public education. And it is already very, very challenging, and that is even with some, some increased funding. But we aren't at, you know, we're at two thousand and eight funding levels with that increase. So, if that piece gets any smaller, that is, doesn't seem like it is, once again, we, we don't know necessarily the direct danger it could cause here. And we have a lot of things in place that we can withstand and maintain, but it does concern me greatly for the rest of the state. And then finally, just, public schools serve all students. They serve students regardless of their religion, their abilities, their behaviors, and their financial status. And I think that's a pretty great thing. And, you know, that isn't the case in private institutions. And I think that, you know, that's something we need to be quite clear on. And then also that there are systems of accountability. You know, we talked about the great performance of our schools in terms of the state assessment. We do have a system in place in public schools where we report out to the citizens, the public taxpayers on our performance. You know exactly, you can see our salaries. All this information is available to you. You know the governing bodies, you elect them, the school board, the site-based council. And we don't know what kind of accountability, if any, we would be seeing from private institutions because they currently don't have those systems in place. So for all those reasons, I will be, as an individual, voting no. I do encourage you, as an individual, to educate yourself. Jeff pointed out, there's a lot of information, and I would say this to all people, about all the elections and everything on the ballot. Educate yourself. Question the sources, make sure they are reliable sources. You know, make sure they're citing their information in terms of why teachers would be paid more or the legislative, legislative branch would start working with the governor. Because I have not seen that being the case in the last few years. So, please, in all things voting, as a former civics teacher, educate yourself. But especially, please educate yourself on this amendment and talk with your friends and share what you, information you find. I know the Kentucky School Board Association and the Pritchard Committee are sources that are very well cited and do have a lot of information out there. And I would encourage you to avail yourself of that. So, I think we are thoroughly discussed at this point. Does anybody else have anything they would like to say? We would just reiterate, we are speaking as individuals, not as the Fort Thomas School Board, you know, and that public educators within the school day and using school resources will not be promoting something, even though the private institutions can utilize their private institutions to do that. We, as public stewards of the public tax dollars, will not. But as Sarah mentioned, you do retain your First Amendment rights as a private citizen outside of the school day and not utilizing school funds or, or communication to share your thoughts on the matter.
Very good.
All right, so our next discussion item is if we have any board committee updates. I don't know if we've had any committees meet since our last gathering. It's kind of startup time of year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Made some selections on that, initiatives and whatnot.
Well, yes, oh, yes. So, continuing to do some work at Tower Park and the project, which will be a great project, very thoughtful selections. So, all right, then that takes us to our approval of the consent agenda. So, with the recommended motion being with all board members having had the opportunity to review and peruse and pursue any questions about all the items contained therein, approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is, is there any other business at the moment? If there is no other business, then we will adjourn at seven-thirty-eight? Thank you.